Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 AM on October 17th, 2022, at 6:00 PM here in Taung. Need a motion to adopt the agenda, however, we'd like to, I'd like to add to the agenda, make it 6A, the Wyndham Regional Commission Agreement that will be spoken for today by Rich and Linda. So somebody make a motion, please? To adopt the agenda with the clarification.
Second.
Any other discussion?
So Joe, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just note a typo, which is number eight, the West Waterway Started Committee, and other business, other business sheet, for the onus and sectors.
Thank you.
It's released. And also I'm wondering if we should know the town hearing or the traffic ordinance, which I believe is going to be on November 7?
Correct.
Should that be also in the next meeting?
Well.
I think it starts at 5:30, is that right, John?
5:30. Red, you remember, is it 5:30, public hearing next to the?
I don't think we've set the time, but.
It was in the afternoon, so 5:30.
5:30.
Or seven, or.
So we'll just add that to the agenda.
I think that would be good to have under the next regular meetings, so it would be the regular select board meeting and public hearing on the track forward.
Okay, any other additions or corrections? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The minutes, we had just one seconds to do today, and that's the minutes of October 3rd, 2022. Are there any additions also reference to the minutes as presented? There are none, so would you make a motion to accept the minutes of October 3rd, 2022?
Second.
There's no further discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Highway. Would you like to tell us then what's going on?
How, your new trucks will be here in the next couple weeks, so they're done.
The ton body at home, everything?
That's what they said, I believe, when I see it. As far as that, we're pretty much sticking to what we've been doing, was ditching and get back to green, deal with leaves, and we did have one little incident down by the mats, Margot Matt's place there, recovering to the garage grills, so I got a call at the lobby at her, price had three pair of that.
Do we know who did it?
Yeah.
Do we get insurance claim on that?
I'm not sure. I'll give that to, I'll give that to Bill.
Who was it?
Or that's where it came.
Where was it?
Down by the mats, like Margot Matt's place in the corner there by the bridge.
But that, that court should be covered by the, by the driver's shirts. We, we were gonna handle it that way, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's pretty much all right. Just follow through with what we're doing.
Mike, did you have any luck with assault purchase from?
We did get some solvent from Appalachia, and we finally got a price from Carville, which is gonna be 84.50, which is not cheap, but cheaper than the first one, so we'll probably be pursuing that. But they, they weren't gonna get set up and going for another couple weeks, because they're out of Berlin, and they have to move down here before they start getting solved out. It'll be a while, so.
But you have, you have some, you have some case.
Yes. So we'll get something.
Hey Mike, do you know how many hours you'd run in a greater year approximately?
In a year? Oh, good lord. I'll have to pop on my head.
Well, if you.
You wanna find out, so always, yeah, I can do that. Like in the whole, like what it runs per year or per person?
Which end?
Per person or?
No, no.
You don't, how many hours you get told about that?
Anybody have anything else they'd like to?
On the FEMA update, we have everything sent in, sent in to FEMA for the Ledge Road. That project completely done, $178,000. And just so you know, FEMA is no longer in the state, so everything is sent to VDM that sends it to region. I don't know if that's gonna be slower or faster, but it's going to Boston for the big. And then we have one other piece of business to send to them, and that is our management, the time that John and myself and the highway people and Michelle spent administering the grant, which they pay separately. And we have that all ready to go, but Michelle wants to put it all together and go over it again to make sure that she's happy with it, then we'll send that in sometime this week, and that's 20, well, as much as 24,000, it isn't gonna be that high. They estimated it at 5%, but it's actual that they pay. And then once that's done, we should have a clearance for the whole August of, or July of 2021 flood, and all that should be paid for. So far, we've received around 280,000. We should get 178,000 fairly quickly, and then the 24,000, and that should complete everything for that, the floods of that summer.
Good news.
So Bill, just to clarify, the 24,000 is the state closeout that we talked about last?
No, the state, the state is additional money, then we don't know when we're gonna receive it unless Kim has got some.
Yeah, we don't know, other, it will take quite a while, except for the state. The Fed still owes us 160,700 for the Ledge Road, which we haven't gotten, and that's 30%. And the state still owes us 12, 5%, so 15, probably another 25,000 outside of the category, it's to be that Bill's talking about. So we still have 185,225 dollars coming to us.
Okay, so I lost track, I'm sorry. So is the 178 in addition to the 185 that we've got, that we are yet to receive, or is it that 160 in the 170?
We've gotten 279, 128 total from the Fed, and now we are expecting 185, 225, 74 more. That includes state portion of 5% and the Fed portion for the Ledge Road. And then we'll get the category administration fees that we're talking about, which is, I don't know what we're trying to do to this, but like Bill said, it's less than 24. That's on us.
Okay, any questions on FEMA? If not, we have, I have in front of me the utility relocation agreement that we need to sign. Is there any objective comments or any concerns about signing this relocation adjustment for the bridge? Okay. Then, yes, I will sign.
Do we need a motion?
Do we, do we need a motion?
Yes, I would, I'd make a motion to.
Okay, all right. Okay, so make a motion.
To make, to make the order and sign the order. You're making an order. You are ordering them to move their utility.
Okay. So we need, we need a motion, we are ordering the state?
Utilities.
Utilities.
To move their utility.
All the utilities, you're gonna move the utilities. Okay. And then, and the order can, can be in the same motion?
As set forth in that agreement, and read the title of the agreement, and that you will all sign.
Okay, so the title of the agreement, I guess, is the relocation agreement, like, just an order? Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. I'll hand it there, and we can sign it, and then we can hand it back to Morgan. Just wanted to join. Okay, the, the next item is the Walker Bridge. The, apparently, the state is now finished for engineering, and they, they gave specifications on the bridge, and I guess they're asking for any comments to get back to the Vtrans on their bridge that we all at the board received. I don't know, I don't know what more, I honestly, truly, I don't know what we can do, it's basically, it's, it's cut, whatever they say, they, we have to do, unless you wanna tell me you wanna change the bridge or something, but I don't know, there's really no comment, other than just keep going, unless somebody else has concerns.
Joe, we talked about this at the last meeting, and in the minutes, it said that you think the Highway Committee should look at the plans and report back to the Select Board, because these are the final plans for the bridge, and it seems like, given the expenditure, we should have a due diligence, so the Highway Committee looks at these plans, and then at the 4, October 31st, we have a motion by the Select Board to approve the final plans. Because we did not have a motion when we, when the conceptual plans were presented to us, it seems like we should have a motion.
What, is there a deadline on this?
October 31st.
How are you doing, how did the Highway, the Highway Committee actually meet?
I don't know, did you and Rich talk over the final?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't know just what happened, but I have looked for plans, and I'm surprised I can confirm everything is fine to this.
They haven't made any major changes, other than the ones that they talked about.
Only changed the dollars of that.
I know, wow. And we got to be an engineer, no plans anyway. Yeah, you were, too. Why don't you give them? They're, you know, it's pretty different.
So if there, if there's no, no comments, I guess, Bill, do we, or Morgan or Bill, do we have to acknowledge the thing, or we just, on their letter, or we just not say anything?
I would, I would answer the letter, instead of state, if you don't have comments, if you don't like.
Okay.
Do we need a motion, since John has worked out of the plans, he's on the Highway Committee, he could read the report, the plans better than any of us. Should we just have a motion to approve the final?
I think, I think it should have the motion.
No, maybe two, I'd say it'd be good. I'll make the motion.
Fine. Do we have a second? Do we have any other discussion? Well, if not, all favor of having response to the state on the bridge, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. So.
So Joe, do we have a quarter, or the motion be that we are approving the final plan?
Okay, so the motion, correct that, that we are approving the final plans on the Walker Bridge. We will send a letter to the Vtrans in front of you. Is there any other highway business that we need to talk about? If not, Tim, you, oh.
Hey, everybody got their quarters, and I'm assuming no one had any questions on them, we can see where we're at the first quarter, it's really hard to project too much in the first quarter. Keep in mind, some of those are, like, due, generally due once a year, and that's why you see that they were expended almost to their full amount, so.
Yeah, I think it's a little too early to really.
It really is, to really dig too deep into it, but just so you know, like, the LC2 dues, things like that, and we have the dues, those are on, the mats are ready, and it's, because it's a once a year. Then, just to let you know, I did, this past week, get the draft public to our audit from Sullivan and Powers. I've gone over it, I've spoken with them. And I've made the journal entries that she has asked me to do, and just some typical journal entries from last year to move monies around. And I've looked at the final after the monies have been moved, so I agree with her. I can tell you, briefly, it looks like we ended fairly well her position we were in at the FEMA, and when we sat on FEMA. We ended up, we'll, we'll see that where the unassigned shows up as what we considered surplus, but actually than the audits, I started calling it unassigned, there is brackets of $755. So we did use up our unsigned funds from the previous year that had, I think, 315,000 was unsigned last year. This year, we're a negative 755. So it's a timing issue, a scenario that FEMA didn't pay us until this year, but we had to expend all our expenditures last year. So we got all that money coming back in this year, and it'll walk out after the audit, April 22, 23. So actually, looks are good. That's about the best I can tell you for right now. I'll have more final figures. She'd like me to give her an idea of what we've gotten back already from FEMA, because when they were here in July, we hadn't gotten paid from FEMA yet, we have now. So she wants to make notations of that within the audit of last year, so that it just explains and offsets, you know, I were 755, then the negative. So that should happen within the next couple days. I'll get the final, after she gets my note, and then I'll definitely announce to you guys on the final audit. In Fred, I'll do a visit, by radio, so please, probably, rather than in person.
How did we have enough cash to cover that?
Because we've got reserve accounts, so we've actually got money set aside, reserved for other things. So it's kind of sitting there, it's committed, but it's within the general fund. So we're working with the money, but we are committed that we have these reserves that we have to pay for. And we've always kept that 15%, that Fred has always, you know, emphasized that we really need to keep 15% of our, here on our budget, and this is a good reason one, it's really helped. So, yeah. So if you have any questions on that, and like I said, I'll pass on the, the final one as soon as I get it. I gave everybody, I know people who have gotten on their box budget worksheets. So if at all possible, that you guys could pencil in each individual what you think it could be, and then when we meet, we'll see what each one of us come up with a figure. And I was hoping, I know November 7th, we sent out and leave invitations for the rescue, the library, and fire department to win your presentation on the 7th. So at that point, I didn't know if there's any chance of maybe budgeting, but scheduling November 10th, that Thursday, at 5:00, for us to work on the highway budget, and if at all possible, we can roll in to start doing the general and try and get things wrapped up sooner rather than later.
So Kim, I wrote you this morning that I'm not available on the 10.
And the only thing is, then, I can't do, the 7th, obviously, is the Select Board meeting, the 8th is elections, Wednesday I'm not here, Friday's a holiday, but then we're moving into the following week. The 17th, I'm not available, I'm not able to do it, I mean, so that would leave Monday and Tuesday of the following week. And that's if Mike can make it any of those days.
Well, I think we need, we need at least two meetings, Kim. If you, if it's certainly to avoid it, then I think we need to have a second meeting, and possibly a third. And like we did it last year, you're doing this at 5:00, last year we did it earlier, and we did it at 9:00 in the morning, but that's, you know, we dropped the board.
We can do Mike early if.
But I think what we did last year was, we started with the highway budget first, and we got through that, and then the next day, we did the fire department, the library, and all the selectmen's budgets and all that. And I think we finished it in two, two days, I think, and then we had another meeting, I believe, a few weeks later to confirm, I think that's how it was.
It seems to me like us here seem to drag on, and I would think that we could possibly, I mean, the 7th, we're gonna get the library and the rescue and the fire. So those numbers, we can plug in right off. Suzanne, are you available at all on the 10 during the?
I will try, I, I will try to make the meeting at 5.
Well, let me, I will not be able to during the day.
Not during the day?
No, but I don't wanna miss the budget meeting. So I do have a previous commitment, but I'm gonna try to work it out in such a way that I can attend the budget meeting from 5 to 6.
How about?
Does that work?
What about, do you want, I think, anytime during your work day, that's fine, on the 17th, if we were to the 17th, that, planned it to 17 during the day, and that work?
You mean Monday the 14th?
Monday, November 14th, yeah.
Monday, November 14th?
Yeah.
Yes, I can do anytime that day.
That works for me, I'd rather do the Monday, Monday and the 14th than, than Monday.
Time? What time?
I know Rich won't be able to make that.
Yeah, it's hard for Rich to come during the day.
Right. So that's up to you guys.
It seems to me we should try to have all the Select Board available for these, like, meetings.
Well, what's your kind of pleasure? I mean, we have, we have time to meet, and.
Do you want to have 5:00 on the 14th?
And Rich, I don't think he makes 5:00, he can't make the 6:00, 5:00 meetings here.
Well, I think he had a special meeting tonight.
No, no, I understand.
But what if we said, in fairness to Rich, we all set the meeting up at 5, if he's available, and if he's not available, we'll set it up earlier in the day?
We all be available earlier, because he's in school.
No, that's what I mean, if he's available at 5, we'll have a meeting at 5. And if he's not, we can't.
We're busy today, so. On the 14th, you're talking about, Al?
Mm-hmm. 5:00. Monday. Monday.
14.
So 5:00 PM. And yet, what you're saying, if, if Rich can't make that date, then we'll do it at 9:00 in the morning, is that okay?
Does that work for you, Ken?
If Rich can't make it. I think, I think we should have another date, too, Kim, just in case, even if we don't use it, so we should set it apart, so we all. And maybe we do it, but that's Thanksgiving week, you wanna do it the weekend of the 28th, November? That week? Just set another date, and.
What should I do, if Rich is here?
We could do it, I don't know, what, what, how's everybody feel, do it, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I guess.
Are the dates again?
Would be the 20, 20, could do it 29, 20, 30th or 1st of December?
Yeah, I, I'm at a book on that.
What, I'm gonna make that on that date? Excellent.
How about on the, because Kim doesn't work on Wednesdays, how about the 27th, or, I'm sorry, the 29th?
All right, 29, boy.
29, Thursday.
No, she can't, can't say anything, make it on 29th. How about the 30th, the 31st, or the 1st, I mean? The 1st, or the 7th, in a better way. You wanna do both ones?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to be in our town for the 1st and the 2nd.
Okay.
The 28th doesn't work?
28th works, does that work for everybody?
28th is, I mean.
All right, so let's do it November 28th. That'll be the, if necessary, depending on how we can.
And is that gonna be at 5:00 also?
Uh, yeah, I guess we'll do it at 5:00, and then. And if Rich can't make it again, maybe we'll do it in the morning, is that, we'll do the same thing again? Okay, or Monday, depending on Rich. All right, good. Kim, do you have anything else?
Uh, graphics, all I have.
Okay. We have Golden Cross on the thing, I'm not sure why it's here, does anybody want to address it?
So, Bill, you reached out to Keith.
Nice, good night, thank you, being there.
You did. You sent us the, the data on the utilization of the various ambulance companies, and I think the suggestion was also that Keith could speak to this issue when he does his budget presentation.
You can, yeah.
I think that, that would be a good idea.
But the real answer is not a perfect world, and wherever we get to contract, it's not always gonna be available. So they're, they're here, the worst, worst was, I think that one month they were, they were, what, 14% of the time, they didn't make it, but most of the time, they're here. So why don't we just wait till the 7th, and then if there's still concerns on it, we can hit it, we can keep it from the first block?
I think that'd be fine, John, thanks.
All right. All right. You are up on the WRC, Eric.
Okay. I want the Select Board to have a chance to consider what, you know, often, and myself as commissioners, draft and commissioner, the WRC need to vote on next week. And that is the approval for WRC to engage in inter municipal agreements. That sounds like a mouthful of bureaucratic garbage, however, what it amounts to is that presently municipal governments can make agreements with other municipal governments for various functions that they want to do, but the WRC is not allowed to be part of those agreements as a administrator or participant. A, for instance, it'd be like a joint purchase of equipment or supplies, or maybe the administration of a particular office in town that's hard to fill, like administrative officer, or a flip line manager, those are skill sets which are not universally available, and really hard in general to fill on individual municipal basis. We've done this in the past, and had a bit of trouble doing it, until Bill took over and, and did it for us. That kind of thing can be done at a, a level of the Wyndham Regional Commission, serving as an administrator, administrator, if we give the go-ahead as one of the towns of 27, I think, in the region, to allow them to enter any of these, enter municipal agreements as an administrator or other party to the, the agreements. On its face, I think this is a good thing, and certainly in the, in the near future, it makes things a lot easier for some towns. My apprehension is that if this were to become the normal way of government functions, in other words, towns relinquishing their control over some number of different functions that they normally now have to provide for themselves, and say, 80% of the towns in the region chose to have WRC as their administrator for whatever function they're looking at, this becomes much closer to what I would call county government. We have had, in the state of Nevada, really a strong town government and a strong state government and a very weak. government and a very weak county government. This will facilitate, if it were carried through, um, a beginning of the county government by default, by default. I, I don't necessarily think that's bad, except I'm, I'm worried that we would lose some degree of local control if it becomes a universally accepted practice in the region. Um, I know Joe was advocating to me to, uh, Cheryl and I give an opinion on where we should go on this, um, and it's hard to, uh, show black and white which direction we should head. I would say that in the near future, that kind of agreement is one which doesn't hurt us, helps the region, and can be a benefit, but I do want to have your eyes wide open that if this morphs into a county government 10, 15 years down the pipe, um, we will lose some local control. Don't know if that will happen, just wanna make sure that, uh, you're aware of what we're doing, and our votes will count, that's, that's part of the region.
So you're recommending that we, that we sign it?
I, I think that we should vote that way, yeah, Cheryl and I should vote in favor. Uh, I really, I want to have some discussion from the rest of you, because this is a, a representation of the town, and Cheryl and I, however, we're certainly opinionated on our own part, would, would really like to have some backup from you as to, um, what you think.
So, so anytime can a town of Grafton pull out of this, or are we stuck with?
Uh, we're never, we're never obliged to be, so nothing really changes.
Well, I'm worried about local control.
Yeah.
And that we represent, this board represents the people of Grafton. Do the people of Grafton have a vote on this, or is it just your permission, commissioners?
Well, we're being asked as a commission to approve it, and Cheryl Meyer coming to you to say, well, this is what they're proposing to you as the representatives of Grafton, feel that that's the way we should be, uh, urging to go. I, I don't think this should necessarily go to a town referendum, it's a complicated enough issue just for you and us to figure out, but I don't think it should be necessarily wished to a referendum.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Kathy and with Eric's apprehension about taking a step toward county government. One of the strengths of the state of Vermont is a strong state local government, mainly because we're a rural state, and there's a lot of space and time between towns. And I think we've noticed this in two recent situations. One is with the school board, when we were asked to consolidate with a town that by many standards is really not that far away, but when you started to look at the complications of collaborating with that town as a school board, it was to our interest and to Kathy's point, to the interest of the people of Grafton, not to have that consolidation happen. And most recently, in the state of Vermont, the ARPA funding came directly to the towns in those states with strong county government. The money went to the county and was then distributed by the county to the towns. Now, I think we benefited a lot, so around you, from having that ARPA money come straight to our town and having it be under our control how we would spend it. And it's not anything that I have against the Wyndham Regional Commission, it's a momentum that I think will always be with us to consolidate, and I think we have to resist it as long as we possibly can, and I would, I would rather see you vote against it.
I, I, 100% agree. I, I, I don't wanna see local control taken away, and it seems that every year, the feds, the states, they kind of nip a little bit of local control, and I'm, I'm certain would urge you to vote against.
Yeah, I agree, too.
Eric? Can I ask? Do I say anything?
No, go ahead. Um, so as you explained, I got the impression what you would vote for allows the town to acknowledge and ask Wyndham Regional, but it doesn't require.
Right.
It's not automatic that they are your agents or your administrator, but in some cases, it would be beneficial, and it gives you that choice, or the town the choice which way they want to go. Um, if that was allowed to happen, has there been discussion, or would it, um, address an issue I saw happen during the ice storm in, um, Grand Isle County? And the issue there was that the fire chief, by default, in most cases, was also the, uh, emergency management director for that town. Well, in their town, the fire chief can walk in a water and do whatever they want, all kinds of authority, and, and make decisions. But the problem came when you had an incident that affected multiple towns, and how did you set priority over which town got service first, which town got served? And, you know, there's some towns, they're in, they've already got the power back, they're raking up leaves and stuff, and there's other people in other towns that haven't got power yet. And so, having a person that could step up, when the fire chiefs did it, but he had really no authority, but somebody had to make a decision, how are we going to delineate priorities with multiple towns affected and, and say, this town, this town, this town? Has that been addressed, or, because what it seems happening is the regional planning commissions are starting to take a more active role in, um, emergencies than they used to, because we, we always thought, well, Vermont Emergency Management, they'll do it, and they don't. Then they'll get these resources, but they don't manage the incident, they don't help you set priorities, and so there really was no way to do it. We, during our meeting, WRC was very helpful, us here, this town, and coordinating with other towns.
That wouldn't change?
No, it wouldn't change. And, uh, if we were to agree to their, um, inclusion in intermunicipal agreements, uh, not only do we not have to sign on to any, but, um, we can re, we can reject being part of them anytime in the future. The only time this morphs towards county government is if a preponderance of towns in the region choose to go with some kind of, uh, an agreement that Grafton chooses to not be part of, and then that preponderance becomes the norm, and we are the outlier and not a recipient of the benefits, so to speak. Uh, as a, for instance, you mentioned the FEMA money, it would be possible if that kind of agreement were an effect for all of the, when the, all the regional commissions in the, in the, um, state, that the FEMA money might have gone to WRC to be distributed if all of the towns were all part of this agreement, that this is the way it will handle. That's, it's the, it's the evolution towards county, county government, not the immediate future that I'm more concerned.
Grafton has done pretty well with all the floods and all in our problems, uh, and, and we did, we did well during COVID. I, I don't think they need that, Bill.
I agree with Eric, things been said, however, I wanted, if you would look down at that list, about three quarters down the page, right now, we are doing animal control by such an agreement.
Right.
Uh, we're look, and, and we're in way, sharing, sharing services, okay? Um, both of those are the same thing. Where, with the ones that bother me on that list are, and, oh, zoning bylaw administration, you, you are going to have to do that at some point in time, because the floodplain manager and the zoning administrator have to be somebody who knows what they're doing and have good, have good community service, because I've seen too many of these guys that come in and they take five towns, they don't do anything, or they, they don't give very good service, and we, we've had that problem. But the, not every town, you're either gonna have to afford to hire the, a person or to do it full-time, which you can't, or, uh, you're gonna have to get into a administrative agreement like this. The other one that bothers, would bother me is the town administrator and the finance manager. If you, if, if those were part of an agreement, now you're looking at county, now you're going to county government, and there's no way around what, what you're doing there. But we're doing the, the animal control, and I, and you're probably gonna have to do at some point in time the floodplain and the, and the administrative office.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
Uh, may I just ask one more question, please, Joe? Eric, you've been so articulate in, um, parsing out this issue for us, thank you for that. Um, I'm just wondering how this decision will be made at the Wyndham Regional Commission? Will it be a majority vote, or are we opting in or opting out of some unknown now?
I think it's at least a majority vote, that's, that's the session, it's specified in there somewhere.
Is that, is 67%?
25%.
67%.
Was 67% the majority?
Super majority.
Yep.
And that happens on October 25th?
Yeah. Someone do I make a motion?
I know that we, um, what, what should the word be, Eric? That we ask or that we request?
Recommend that our vote is to one way or the other, if you want.
Yeah, that we recommend, our commissioners vote against the proposal for inter municipal services by the Wyndham Regional Commission.
Do we have a second, Eric? Is there any other discussion before we go ahead and, and make this?
Do any members of the public, any, anticipate about this? I mean, wanna make, wanna make the best decision?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I'm coming into this tonight without having heard anything about the issue previously, except what Eric has just explained and the other comments, but, um, to me, there is the obvious question is, which hasn't been asked so far, what would be the potential cost savings to the town if we do share some services with other towns, especially our neighboring towns? Um, there, there might be some, some savings. And the other question would be about, um, sharing knowledge. Uh, as we all know, uh, government becomes more and more complicated, there will be more and more regulations and new laws and requirements that come upon every little town, and, and there could be some help coming to a small town like ours from sharing the resources. This way, uh, so I, I would assume that the, the idea behind this from the WRC is to benefit the towns with cost savings and additional resources and services. And I've also seen that it's completely voluntary, that, and I'm assured the town can also opt out at some point if not, but I, I see some potential benefits of being part of this. As town government becomes more and more complicated, as you all know, and we deal with everything that comes out.
Eric, do you have a response? I don't, I don't see how this, how it would be cost savings to us, but.
At present, uh, our town is free to engage with agreements with any other town without any restriction. Uh, this vote would allow Wyndham Regional to act in an administrative role within those, the great, that's the difference.
If we asked them to.
Yes, if we asked them to. Uh, and the other thing is, as far as education's concerned, um, WRC already does that for us and would continue. Um, it's just that they wouldn't be doing it in a role where they're, um, making decisions for us. That's, that's all I've got to say about them.
Thank you. But this doesn't really, again, I apologize for not having any written whole page yet, but this doesn't delineate if the decision-making would occur and on what types of matters. I would assume that the town can opt out of any shared municipal action.
Yes.
But.
In fact, you'd have to opt in in order to participate.
Right. So, so it's not clear to me where the downside here is.
Is that why you were, is that why you and Cheryl were going to vote for it, because of the act of the now?
Well, as far as speaking for myself.
Right.
There's, um, some near-term, um, benefit to having WRC be able to help collection of towns do things that are about their, uh, immediate and comfortable capability. It's only when all the towns put in and choose that same, um, agreement, shall we say, that it becomes more like county government. So I, I would be comfortable with saying, yeah, go ahead and do it, but this is why, this is what we're worried about, you becoming our, our county government for us, but we can say, no, obviously.
And then opt in at some other point?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
I had a question, Eric. I know this is both of the benefits and the, the cost savings, but also we give to Wyndham Regional a, um, yearly, so is this gonna increase?
No, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
It doesn't?
No.
Okay. It's totally separate.
Oh, and the education piece, for instance, that's what pays a little, you know, they're being able to come here and, uh, put on a presentation on a topic for us, for education, um, and they, they have to follow up and talk about, uh, mapping issue. They have somebody on board to, uh, give us map information and oftentimes present us with hard copy for free. It's not free, but this being provided as a service that comes under that, um, town service.
But that wouldn't change.
That wouldn't change.
It wouldn't change anyway, if, if, whether you voted against any.
Right.
And I have just add one more thing, Bill. Um, wasn't it the Wyndham Regional that we had to give up the connective segments, Bill? All that was?
Because they didn't do the work, yes.
Except for that, this is part of the same jester?
Oh, I, it's kind of apples and oranges, but the Wyndham, but the regional planning commissions are not intended to be county government, and that's one, that is a whole other issue we get talked about. They don't, they have a tough time in some of the regions just doing what they are supposed to be doing right now, giving a service in highway or emergency management and emergency management. Now, Wyndham Regional is really good in both those, except that in highway, he's so overwhelmed because no one else in, in the place was doing anything, and he had to do all their jobs, and he couldn't get to our jobs. So, that, I mean, I just, one once I compete with it, they, they're not set up to be county government.
So, Eric, if we step back and just think about the ultimate outcome of this vote, if other commissioners, like our motion calls for, reject the idea of the WRC becoming the administrator of intermunicipal, inter municipal services? the W R C becoming the administrator of intermunicipal services, then everything just stays the same.
Right.
It will not preclude us from entering into intermunicipal agreements. The only difference would be that when we do, the Wyndham Regional Commission would not be the administrator.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, let's go for the discussion. Can I call a question? All favor of the motions?
Hi.
Hi, Mike. Good, you got your motion over.
Thank you.
Um, committee reports, um cemetery, we have not had the yet Mr. Jones. And um both myself and John have been pretty busy the last couple of weeks, but we are scheduled to meet uh next week till then the the cemetery policy to bring this forward to the board. Highway Committee? Parks, you guys are up.
Um, hi, Mark. For those of you don't know us, these the three of us have been working on the parks for the the committee, the volunteer committee. Uh, we're gonna do a little bit of updating on what we've done and what we wanna do. We've split this up into three parts. Um, I'm gonna cover what we did during two thousand and twenty two. Uh, I do have a list here if you guys want that for the minutes. Um, divided that into three projects, three main categories during two thousand and twenty two. The first, which were major projects, which the biggest one was the logging operation that was completed in February, March of this year. Um, it cleaned up by the loggers and then the three of us allowed us to open that park back up by May twenty seventh for Memorial um day weekend. Um, the other two components this year that were pretty big that are general was there was a Ursa grant that was presented, was submitted in November of two thousand and twenty one. If you remember, Ursa grant was an unlimited grant that came through with no matching funds required. We tried for the covering of all of the parking area, a universally accessible trail and the education center at the picnic area. Uh, that was a total of around forty seven thousand. Um, we were rejected for that in February of two thousand and twenty two, which is why I'm including that. The second grant that we tried for, which is which was a recreational recreational trail grant um was a thirty thousand dollar cap on that with a twenty percent matching fund that could be either volunteer labor, actual monies, kind of service. Um, we did that for just the educational center and the universally accessible trail. We eliminated the parking area because that was gonna be covered by the logging monies. Uh, we were rejected for that on the twenty fifth of August of two thousand and twenty two. Interestingly, I'll just throw this out, three of the recipients that got that were over the thirty thousand dollar cap, which were being a hundred and sixty thousand, which kind of baffled me. So I did go back to the state and asked them how they could give a grant for a hundred and sixty some thousand when the cap was thirty thousand. I'm happy to share that with you, but it was a little bit even, sent it to Bill, sent it to a couple people. It was a little bit like, I don't know, changed the rules of the game and I have no real explanation for why three of those people have got much bigger grants, but it did take a lot of the money. Uh, they said we were right up there next to the cutoff, but hey, you know, it doesn't count. Okay, other things, our parking and entrance area was a big um completion this year. Want to give great thanks to the Grafton Highway Department. You guys did a fabulous job, much gratitude for doing that. Um, the entrance road also, the the highway department put fill in so that if you've been up there, you know, it's kind of a curved entrance road, it's pretty long. And so this allows two cars, if they're coming this way, for one to pull over and the other one to pass as opposed to people having to back up and try and maneuver around there. Um, also includes a porta potty niche and trailheads. The porta potty was installed, thank you to the Grafton Improvement Association, for two months. It'll probably be coming out next next month, so if you wanna use it, please get up here. It's worth taking away. Um, kiosk that was made before was installed by the Grafton Highway Department. Kiosk information and map was laminated and placed in that main kiosk. And walking sticks in a very lovely container are right next to that kiosk, thanks to the Grafton partners. Um, the ground surrounding the parking area was raped and grass seeded. The ditch hazard markers were erected and hostile plants were put under the village park sign. We will be continuing with native plant plantings next year. The trails, we did our typical hazard trees removed, including the white trail, which is not in the park property, but borders the nature museum on which they use for ferry house. We just threw that in because we feel anybody, we want everybody safe who's gonna be there, all the kids and the one who visits. Um, in spring maintenance, we cleared limbs, clipped side growth, blew leaves for trail definition. The lead meter root trippers, if you don't know what this is, or they're the kind of the roots that crawl there, you all know, when you catch your toe on it and go down. And we color marked all the trails. The connector trail, which is a large trail that Alan and Mike had cleared, um and it goes from the parking area over to that trail that comes from the entrance and goes over to the picnic area, which we are hoping at some point to have universally accessible, um was raped, grass seeded, and then the grass did so well that we rewhacked it to define the pathway and threw in a couple wood chips. We need some foot traffic up there, so please go up, start in the parking lot, walk over to a very nice bench because we need to get that kind of defined. Um, educational circle of stumps at the picnic area was rewhacked and reset because it had been disturbed somewhat by the logging. Uh, we had a new bench made and installed at the picnic area. Two debris piles that were left over from when you all did the invasive removal were dispersed at the entrance area. Nature loves chaos, but people like it much sooner. So we did that so people would not see these big piles of debris. And finally, we did the new trail that's gonna be the continuation of the yellow trail. And it's gonna go up the hill to where the logging was done, and it's a it's a beautiful view. So we we cited it, we marked it. It's on our agenda for two thousand and twenty three to actually cut through and do that trail. So um, do you want a copy of all these or are you there? No?
Yes. Sure. I'm sure. Thank you for hearing that, yeah. Okay, and Mike, were you on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so as Mark went through, we uh we did a lot of things uh over the last twelve to fourteen months or so. But we also decided to refocus going forward so that our role would be clearer. And our primary focus going forward is gonna be on maintaining trails, clearing brush, making making sure the markings are are visible and focusing on the safety of the park as far as hazardous trees and uh things that might threaten people walking and using the trails. Um, we have no plans at this point to pursue further state or federal grants and have none, you know, that that we really know about at this point anywhere. Um, we also don't plan on doing any independent raising of funds, although we have been approached. We have obviously gotten some private donations um from individuals and organizations to support what we've kind of identified as our goals in the past. Um, and we have been approached with people that are interested in donating, but have we've been asked questions about overall plans for the park that we're not in a position to answer. And we would propose that the select board, the park subcommittee, you know, establish perhaps some methodology uh when individuals want to donate to the park to receive those donations and answer any questions that individuals might have, you know, with regards to their donations and the use thereof. Um, we've depleted a considerable amount of the funds that were in the budget allocated to the village park. Um, we don't really know, um, in terms of dangers, we've talked with the subcommittee in the past about the need to be aware of dangerous costs going forward. We don't know what the cost of mowing the grass to the original park entrance. Um, we would encourage the consideration of plowing the access road to the new parking area for snowshoers and winter users of the park, uh, but we haven't, you know, discussed any budget or we've just proposed that as a recommendation of our committee going forward. And likewise, going forward, uh, we think that the addition of a porta potty in the park adds to not only the the park itself, but also an alternative location in the town. And that may be a consideration to somehow identify it that it's up there uh because you may drive by the one in Winnie Park in a way, and you're not likely to drive by Village Park, not sure if you're using it. But it might be uh an advantage to have people visiting the town to know that there's an alternative that's up there. And I think that's all I can say. I think Al's gonna talk a little bit more about um two thousand and twenty three and some of the projects that we'd like to have.
So we had the two big projects that we didn't get the funding for. And one was the the idea of having an easy access trail with a flat surface for the uh people less athletic, be they young or be they old. Um, but it's just a smooth surface and easy access. And we wanted that to go from the old access, the old point of access uh from the fire condo out to the picnic area, that the old picnic area is still there. This, the second thing that we wanted to do was build a uh, we started out calling it lean to. Um, we were encouraged to uh rename it or think of it more as a learning center or an activity center other than a lean to, because when we applied for grants, people hear lean to, they think camping. And its real intent was not camping, its real intent is for the elementary school that uses the park one day a week or outdoor classroom and for the nature museum. And if a group of people wanted to get together and have a picnic and and spend some time at that, built that structure. So that's our our intent, it's not meant to be camping. Um, but there's only about twenty four hundred dollars left in the budget. And um, that's not enough. Um, we requested about ten to twelve thousand dollars for materials. Um, we probably could do it a little cheaper if we do volunteer labor and materials. But um, we we don't really officially have identification like the fire department or other organizations in town. So we're hoping that um maybe the park committee would remember we're there and we we're willing to do some work, but something in the budget. And so we don't currently have a a method or way to do that. So um, if you're kind enough to include us when you build your budget, we would appreciate it. Of the two things, um, we decided our priority would be to do the um outdoor center, outdoor building slash lean to. Um, we think that would benefit the school and would benefit right away to the um nature museum. Um, we are reluctant to invest time and energy in the trail uh that we would like to do until we know what does or doesn't happen in the wastewater. So uh kind of a, just you.
How much, how much, if there's a view with it? Um, have a budget lined, I'd like line item in the upcoming budget for the park. Do you have a number?
Well, and and what was, well, I have to first answer your question with a question. Um, originally, the the idea was that our money revenues from the river sale would be a line item and earmarked for the village park.
Correct.
My question is, um, and originally, the select board had a line item that was maintenance, which included lawn mowing and that sort of thing in uh Winnie Park as well as up here. Is that still being paid for out of the select board's budget? Or is that now coming out of what was the budget for the?
The mowing is coming out of the select's budget. And you still have your reserve, so anything from logging definitely goes to the reserve. And anything is spent from the village park on your park comes off of that reserve. So that your money, save your money for the village park that was going on by voters.
Right, I I just want to confirm that was the way it's working. Um, so we think um we could do the the outdoor structure for for will we ask for ten to twelve thousand? Um, we have to ask in two years or, you know, whatever. Unless someone wants to go in any money.
Have you approached um the school system? Because there's Ursa money that they're using for the playground, but they also have a program, farm to table um for the kids in an outdoor area that they wanna, they have money for. I'm wondering, do they know? Because you're gonna be doing learning and activities on the trail and having a space. Have you contacted the superintendent on that or?
They, I mean, they know what we're doing. Uh, we haven't asked them specifically if they have funding for us. And to be very honest, um.
It's outdoor education.
To be very honest, um, I think all three of us are a little burned out, particularly some more than others, trying to write grants and and beat the bushes for money. Um, all three of us are willing to work and volunteer our time. And all of us have volunteered some of our personal money. But um, we're not interested in uh going around fundraising to to do the work.
It's not so much fundraising, it's accessing that money. Um, because right now they're they're trying to get the new playground in, that's a big chunk of money. Um, but they're they're doing a lot with outdoor education and I mean, I can run a school project, yeah.
And you say tied to dead.
But my guess is just spinning as to what. And have you approached Wyndham Foundation? Because they have the trails, wrapping trails. Like, is there any share there with um help with maintaining trails through that?
Well, um.
Just a thought.
One of the subcommittee members is pretty connected to the foundation.
I think the village park trails are much better shaped than the one in the wrapping things.
Uh, also the A H Hope Foundation is is another source of of funds or something like that.
I'm sure there's no doubt of ways to go about finding funds for this. But I think what the three of us want to do is focus our energies on the actual work inside the park and not spend an exorbitant amount of time trying to get the funding. So leaving that to other individuals who would get it, whether people wanna write grants and look for that, will do the work, will do the construction of that transite education center. I already have four people who were ready to go for next spring had we gotten that one proposal. But we don't wanna spend our time trying to do all these different channels for the money.
This, Mark, did he? I know he's done a lot of work. This, Mark, did you, I know you've done a lot of work and you got rejected several times on the grant, did they tell you specifically why you didn't get the grants and not just, oh, someone's got a grant? Did they give you some help there?
Yeah, in the first grant, I actually called, I'm gonna say four or five times, emailed twice, asking to have been reviewed the proposal to give us the strengths and the weaknesses. That did not come back to me. I went ahead and did the second proposal, and again, I did question why there were three people, three organizations that got such a massive amount of money when it was capped at $30,000 and got what I seem to see as a very set. Oh, yes, I can answer that. The commissioner decided that this would go to No Offense the VAS, an ATB trail, and another that was motorized or vehicles or some kind of other non-walking thing. And there was some glitch that they had to do that. I can't answer.
Well, they make money on that through the licensing and permits for the VAS.
Maybe an ADP.
That's too bad. It's not right.
Well, I think what I hear the committee is saying is that you're willing to do the work, but you don't want to go do the grants. So why don't we, let the select board, let the parks committee think about this, and maybe we can come up with some ideas on how we can find some of these grants. Any other questions? Personal committee, anything? Buildings and grounds, it's pretty evident.
We, they have most of the work done, prep work done for the elevator. Their G-Saw, and when you come up the stairs, they're starting to put the rail there. That's about all they're gonna do in the stairway. The elevator is supposed to come. But it was supposed to be shipped the end of this month, but the shipping can take, has been taking anywhere from one to six weeks, so they don't know when it's even gonna arrive. But the work is all done, ready for them to put the elevator in as soon as it does get here. Except for the beautification of what is already built. And then they are gonna replace the floor. The Bliss Flooring hired by them is going to do the floor in the entryway and the hallway. Not sure how soon that'll be done, but I think it's probably in the next two or three weeks. And at the same time, if there is money in the town hall and if we get some agreement on that, we might do, we probably would do, have them do the lister's office, because that carpet really needs changing. Both, all the carpets have been down there since 1980. And so they all need to be changed. The last time, Kim said they went to shampoo and told them the company refused the shampoo because they said they would be gone, so anyway. They have 25, I was like, we've also asked Mr. Bliss to give us, and well, first of all, give us an estimate on the listers. And that is gonna be a contract between, if we do that, between the town and Mr. Bliss and the Bliss Company, which saves us the percentage that would otherwise go to the contractors. The contractor is very well aware of that. It's not part of his contract to do the lister's office, the administrator's office, or the other offices. But we're asking him for prices to do all of that. And I brought him up here and he loves this floor, and he is gonna give us a price on refinishing this floor. He says there's no reason why you should do anything other than refinish it, he says. It's in good shape, so he's gonna give us a price on that. The reason I'm telling you all that is because the building committee has to look at that from budget, but also the building committee has to give all of you an idea of a recommendation on whether or not we should do any of that now, should the money be available. If there is money available, we just don't know how much is gonna be used to finish the elevator project.
Any other?
And the other thing is, you asked, I think, about the protections for the equipment outside. Mike Rodriguez came today, he took the measurement, and then he's gonna start on Thursday, when it is raining. He's gonna do that. And the other thing that he's going to do, once he gets, he's gonna do the roofs to those equipment outside, gonna take the air conditioner out of the post office and put that window back. Michelle has the window frame to put back. And he's gonna take that little roof off that, that area there. And then begin the new roof from there and go toward the front and then build a roof in the back. And the other thing he's going to do is do the crash bar or push bar, whatever you call it, on the door down at the bottom of the stairs, because we are out of compliance with that door. It should just have a bar for people to leave the building. So that's all.
So Bill, on the floors for the lister and the other two offices, offices, is this a hard floor or a rug or balls? For reference.
It's a hard floor.
Is there vinyl planks?
You know, that clip in wood?
Yep.
That's what it is.
Any other questions, panelists?
And Kim is speaking.
No.
The wait for a committee, as asked at the last meeting, she is gonna compile a list, get the list of the attendees and questions. And the wait for a committee has a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning at 1:00 a.m. And so we can get some more information on where we are, so I'll be able to report back.
And that's with Ty and Bond?
With Ty and Bond, with the state, it's with a whole bunch of people, so.
Joe?
Yes.
Could you ask at that meeting for a map that delineates the area that's being considered for the potential Leach Field?
I'll ask, but I'm not sure they're, I'm not sure that they've made that final decision, but I will ask.
Well, here's why I'm asking for it. After the last meeting, which several of us attended, and the presentation that was given, some of us were discussing afterwards. And some of us felt that the location that was being described was the area between Fire Con Road, the access into the parking area and the red trail. That's where the test pits were. And some of us felt that's the area she talked about. There was other folks that said, oh, no, no, she's talking farther up the hill. She's talking above the access road into the Village Park and the Fire Con, because it's flatter there. So, okay, I'll get it. She could just have some kind of a map that delineated, this is the area that is being talked about, that would be helpful.
Well, just maybe no, so tomorrow, but I don't forget. Yeah, I'll try to get it.
And Joe, I would also be interested in understanding the process that's gonna be used to evaluate the sites for the Leach Field. We're getting lots of local interest in this decision, obvious reasons, and also some concerns that have been raised about flooding in the Village Park, clear cutting in the Village Park. I think we need to get these things talked about in a way.
If they're ready, I would let that lever. It's all we can do.
Yes. What time is the meeting tomorrow?
Nine o'clock.
And it's gonna be here?
Yeah.
Part of that meeting is a discussion of the Alpine, and part of that meeting also, I think, might be the some answers to the questions, but I don't know that she's ready to give those, but she used to prepare that list and get back to us. She wrote down all the questions and the answers that she gave, and she's ready to do. That may be part of her report that is to come next month, or it may be part of the discussion tomorrow.
Yeah, when will I get meetings about some?
It was called by the state to discuss it with the town, so I'm not sure exactly everything they're gonna talk about.
And when will she have the list of attendees?
I don't know, she didn't actually. We've asked her for the list of attendees, the questions that were asked and the answers that were given. And she said she would get them.
While we're on that water quality, would I encourage the next meeting that you have when she's here? I thought the last meeting was worthwhile, it was well-attended by publics. It wasn't as many select board members here as I expected to see, and there wasn't a real big representation in by the Wyndham Foundation either. Whether it was lack of interest, or whether it was poor scheduling and people had conflicts. I just think it's very important that the select board hears not only the presentation, but hears the questions from the audience of what our concerns are. And I think it's important that the foundation is a participant in the process. It's an key. And some people will say, well, they've already got a septic system and blah, blah, blah. They should be a participant, because there could be potential growths they want to do, and, you know, people are ruling out the Alpine Meadows because it's ways away and it's already a town. It just seems like scheduling should consider, and there should be an invitation, and all five select board members ought to be.
The Wyndham Foundation wasn't there, but he, Bob Donald was on vacation.
I understand.
And, but Bob Donald and Ty and Bond have been in contact, so they have a wanted invitation, we've been opened up there, so.
I just think it's a really big and important decision for the community to make, and and for you to hear our concerns, and for everybody to participate, it's important to schedule.
So, and Al, I just want to, because I'm feeling very self-conscious at the moment, because I wear both that flatboard and Wyndham Foundation. And I really tried to be very communicative with the community about the fact that I was not able to attend that meeting. And I've worked with Bill to try to figure out a way for us to schedule the meeting in such a way that I could attend. And I apologize that I wasn't there.
I'm not trying to make people feel bad, I'm just saying, I think it's important and it should have a high priority next time.
Want any comment?
I have one comment. It's a simple request, a white bulb. Put over there. Over here. It's been dark for a year. About a foot taller than I am, I'm not leaning over that rail.
See, maybe get one of the contractors and do it.
If it's a problem, I'll supply.
Yeah, they may have to level it.
The electricians are supposed to come to speak.
Yeah, the electricians are supposed to come, so who's having to?
They get the ball over.
And if it doesn't get done, talk to Kim, because she's in charge of electrician.
And one more thing, the light bulbs were where the lampposts do not work in front of the homestead and in front of the post office. And we're working on that, the Wyndham Foundation knows they're not working, ever since our transformer got switched over. So that's a conversation we have to have with electricians also, to see why and what happened there. Where they're out, the bulbs have been changed, but if there's dead, there's nothing going to them.
Somebody must have did, wired something incorrectly when they made the pitch.
They misunderstood that that was not to be disconnected, disconnected. Well, it looks like it's all disconnected on the corner there by the post office in this wall, really did function. And that was only the light bulbs connected. Any other comments?
The planning commission is producing some maps that we're gonna try and find a home store. Either in here or hand over down, the nice floor down, and some of which include lighter topographic maps of the town, which are quite interesting there. Very highly detailed. I'd like to take a usual USPI geographic quad map and drive it down 10 times in detail. It's really quite interesting to look at. Other maps that we've considered include the proposed land use map and the transportation map. I think there's gonna be an underlayer of anything like that now. But just figured out where you might like him to see these.
Kim is in charge of maps. She has all the map cabinets and all the printables, so.
These will be for public display.
Right, I understand, but I would.
How big are that?
Very big.
Oh, four, up in Bill's corner.
Any other comments?
Question for Bill. As I mentioned earlier, the school is doing the playground. It's permanent, it's happening until springtime. Do they have to go through any reviews to the town or permits? Do that playground?
Not with the town, but you probably have to do stuff with the state. You're a commercial, you're, you know, it's a commercial building, it's a public building. I would make sure you go through Land and Wheeler at DFS in Springfield. The Division of Fire Safety, Land and Wheeler's in charge of the the Division of Fire Safety.
Members name.
I would check with them, other than that, I don't think there's anything. And while we're talking about that, we should get the survey for that area and have it before it was done in the next month or so, so that that property can be added to the lease from the school. It's interesting, the greatest property of years.
Suzanne, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a couple things, thank you, Joe. So Don has been really diligent about researching this issue for the town on short-term rentals. And I think we just need to get that on the agenda at some point. I know we haven't really.
I've already started, and Morgan has just come on board. I've already talked to Kim, we're trying to get up a list of how many air babies we do have, so it's in motion. But, you know, there's been a little transition here, so give us a little time, it's going on, but I do not forget it, I have it here, and I've already had a meeting with Bill and Morgan and Kim about it.
There's an interesting video on Jeff's telegraphs website. They had an open meeting about, and allowed all their citizens to chat. It's worth looking at, if they understand how people are reacting to the proposal, both pro and con. One guy's worried about his mother-in-law, does he have to charge her for staying?
So I just wanted to acknowledge that there's an empty seat here tonight. And that Joan is no longer gonna be with us, and that we're gonna miss her. And I also wanted to say that I think there are a lot of free seats tonight, too, because you're here, and it just makes for such a much more vibrant and participative meeting when you have so many members of the public here. So thank you for coming. And thank you for all you've done, the Village Park Committee, for what you and the commissioners did for WRSC, and it's been a really, I think, good discussion.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I just want to add welcome. Morgan, good day, and first day is
The next meeting will be on November 7th, Monday, at 6:00 p.m. here, and at 5:30, there'll be a public hearing. And at 5:30, there'll be a public hearing. Happy year's, so.